The time is now five oh two. I call to order the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Policy and Governance Committee meeting. One point two, welcome and opening of the chair. Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and an at-large representative of the Board of Education. We will have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff, followed by the board office staff and board legal counsel. So Vice Chair Seronny Ruiz, would you start us off?
Hello, everyone. My name is Alvarez Saranrez. I'm a student member of the board and a vice chair for the committee.
Hi Pamela Boozer Struther, District Three Board of Education Member and Member of the Committee.
Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, and I'm the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Okay, Ms. Saunders.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Saunders, Instructional Director for Charter Schools.
Ms. Gaines.
Good evening. I'm Monica Gaines. I'm the Charter School Liaison.
All right, Mr. Joe Day.
Good evening. Joe Day Newsam, I'm the Board Staff Director.
Cindy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Alley. I'm Administrative Secretary to the Board Office.
And Mr. Whitley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dennis Whitley the Third. I'm a partner at the law firm of Shipland Horn, and we are a board counsel.
Thank you. And we have three board members. We have a corn. One point two, adoption of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda. Any objections? No. Hearing none, the motion passes. Approval of the committee meeting minutes, section one point four. May I have a motion to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The minutes are approved. Two point O, public comments. Two point one and two point two, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video or audio or written. Three point O legislative update. Three point one, MAB legislative committee meetings. I will yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on the May legislative committee meeting.
Okay, yesterday, December the twelfth, board member McInnes Murray and myself and Cindy, we all attended the MAB's Legislative Committee Meeting. And at that meeting, they finalized and then approved their legislative position paper for the twenty twenty-three school year. So we have posted that on this agenda, which is the final version, last meeting, we had the draft. Now we have the final version. And again, I encourage everyone to take the time to read through and identify both the committee members, board members, and the community to go through and identify things that are of importance for yourself so that you can share that information with the board members and with this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And also, this board will put together our priority list, which we will start working on after the, after this break. Three point three, I mean, three point two. MAB ad hoc committee blueprint meetings. I will now yield the floor to Ms., to board member Boozer Strutter to update us on the MAB ad hoc committee blueprint.
All right. Thank you so much. The next meeting of MAB's ad hoc committee is Friday morning, so I will be attending that, which is represented by about fifty percent or twelve of the twenty-four LEAs. And we work together around priorities around the blueprint implementation and then report back to, to MAB and our board, and our respective boards. I wanted to note that on December second, the Accountability Board finally approved the Blueprint Implementation Plan templates, and that is what each of the twenty-four LEAs must follow in terms of submitting the, making the March fifteenth final deadline to submit back to MSDE. And the, from this, this point forward, Dr. Kara Libby does manage the process between now and March fifteenth and has, will have committees and stakeholder report outs. And then, as requested, which I had a correspondence with Chair McInnes Murray, that for the February fourteenth meeting of this committee, Dr. Kara Libby will come and give an actual update as we head towards completion of that. And her goal is to have this completed by March first, ahead of the March fifteenth deadline. So those are, those are my updates at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a hand. Mr. Whitley.
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if you've noticed, but we had a board member join us. I don't know if you want to.
I see him. Yes, I was going to. I see him. Okay. I appreciate him joining us. So Policy and Governance Committee and our invitees, we have a brand-new board member who has decided to join us tonight. And maybe that's the requisite to what committee he might choose anyway. His name is Jonathan Briggs. Welcome, Jonathan. Do you want to say hello to the committee?
Yeah, just want to say hello and thank you so much for the invite to the meeting tonight. I am, you know, very excited to be here, very excited to learn more about, you know, some of the priorities that you all are focusing on. And, you know, as I'm deciding where I want to be, you know, it'd be very helpful. So.
I appreciate that. And, and feel free, as we discuss policies, if you have a question, feel free to ask, okay? Thank you. So now we go to four point O, Policies for Discussion. There are four policies for discussion. Four point one, new policy, Heroin and Opioid Education and Community Action Act of twenty seventeen. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an update on the proposed revisions for the new policy.
Okay, this is a, a brand-new policy, and it's merely up for discussion tonight. Just to give you a little background, back in two thousand seventeen, the General Assembly passed the Heroin and Opioid Education and Community Action Act of two thousand and seventeen. And it basically qualified in the Maryland Code that it required county boards to establish policies for obtaining and storing overdose-reversing medications, including naloxone. And for school nurses, school health services personnel, and other school staff to administer these medications if a student is reasonably believed to be experiencing an opioid overdose. So better late than ever, we are now working on this policy. And this is just a draft at this point. I will just go through and point out a couple important pieces to this. One is, is that, first of all, is that we are going to be, this policy begins the process or establishes the process for the administration of the overdose-reversing medications. And then it also talks about the fact that we will collaborate with the Prince George's County Health Department in educating the community about overdosing, overdose-related emergencies, and the administration of the medications to student, family, and staff, community members. And then if you want to go through it, Cindy, just scroll down a little bit. These are just your definitions. And then go back up the standards. You're going too fast. Just a little bit, keep going right there. So basically, the law lays out the guidelines and regulations for how to store the medication. And then, in terms of who is allowed to give the medication, all of our, our school health professionals, which include our nurses, both our RNs and our LPNs, are allowed to provide the medication. And I think they're in the process of also educating and training some, either athletic directors or coaches to be able to provide the medication. If they were to find, you know, on the spot, they saw a student that was, you know, participating in athletics and then appeared to maybe have been overdosed. So the other thing is, is that, can you scroll down just a little bit? Cindy, yes. That, and so at this point, just so you know, both the Health Department and, and our school office of school health, they work in conjunction together for this training and certification of our staff to be able to administer the medication. So that just tells us that. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, that unless these are school nurse or school health professionals or any other PGCPS-identified personnel, unless they acted willfully or grossly negligent, which is highly unlikely, then they are really responding in good faith, and therefore, they would not be held personally liable for any act or omission while responding to the emergency, because sometimes things happen. So that's important to know. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, it talks about also that we, for PGCPS, to develop a plan for educating students and staff for signs of opiate overdose. And then the fact that we do have the medication on school property and, and then coming up with a plan for how we would report the overdoses. And the other thing is, is that, and there will be in the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook, they would have beginning of each school year, it would be there so that would notify parents and guardians about the availability of this medication at the schools. And then a bigger, a really a very important piece, PGCPS will work in collaboration with the Health Department to look at implementing a community education action plan to educate the community about overdosing related emergencies. So those are probably the, and the medication when someone you think reasonably has, has overdosed. So this is basically the meat of the policy. It is totally based on what the law was requiring. And so if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to, well, I will attempt to answer any questions you might have. Certainly, medication is not my, you know, my area of expertise, but I might be able to answer anything as it relates to any legal requirements.
Madam Chair.
I was muted. Board member Pamela Boozer Strutter.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this. I mean, the reality is, is that we're already following it. I mean, in the last couple of weeks, we've unfortunately had to, you know, swing into action on, on, on this. And of course, with our nurses at high schools and, and then with the community education already that we already know from Mr. Moody's and Dr. Faison's presentation last week that we have Knox alone, Narcan in high schools and middle schools and on the way to elementary. So I see very much, like, this reads like what we've actually been talking about in our school presentation. So I really appreciate that. And the one thing I, and I think this definitely is, like, the more other identified PGCPS personnel when in, in these large buildings, I think there'd be a much greater comfort level to know that throughout these large high schools that they're, that this, that Narcan is available and there are other employees, security personnel or others that can administer, that I'm really glad to see the, you know, that in here, that wouldn't be held liable in that situation, because that certainly came up in the, a parent or staff member asked that in the presentation last week. And I wouldn't be surprised if it comes up in Dr. Goldson's town hall tonight. So I think that's really critical. And I just, you know, wanted to note, you know, that this is already feeling in line with what, how we're already implementing. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from any other board members? Ms., Vice Chair Alvarez Saranrez.
So when it comes to, I know you mentioned potentially, like, athletic directors being able to administer the Narcan. Do we have an idea in terms of, like, what that training looks like? You know, if there's an expenditure requirement, you know, behind that in terms of paying for, you know, training on that? Kind of like how that essentially would work?
I actually do not know any of the answers to your questions, but I will, till we meet the next time, I will get that information and talk to our Office of School Health, because they are, they have been highly involved and very instrumental in moving this forward. And I'm certain they can provide me with more detail about the training, who they intend, the additional people they intend to, to train. So I'll bring that back to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions from any board members? All right, I had one question, because a lot of times when we have personnel identified to take care of, for instance, the nurses in schools, will we have someone available in all schools every day who, who would be able to, to provide this service?
So, that I do not know. I would not want to say yes, because I am certain there might be situations where there, it might be a day when a nurse is out and they might not be able to find a substitute. So I would have to, I will again, go back and see if I can get a little bit more detail in terms of how that looks as far as staffing, because I'm, I'm certain across the system, you know, staffing has been an issue. So that could be a factor, but I will check it out for you.
Yeah, okay. And I appreciate that. So if there is no one present, then we have to have a plan two, a plan B. And I would be interested to know what that plan B is.
Okay.
Okay. And board members on the committee, do you think we need to bring this back to get the answers to those two questions, three? Or do you think that we can ask Ms. Welsh and the administration to prepare this policy for the next meeting to move forward? Do you think we need any more discussion around it, is my question?
I'm okay with it, solely because, I mean, the policy states that in terms of, you know, the broad of it, you know, that we're allowing more people than just nurses to, you know, administer the Narcan and things like that. Question, I believe it would really be outlined more in an administrative procedure that's
Correct.
relative one should be developed.
Okay, remember Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it moving forward for the exact same reasons. Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made today on the new policy, Heroin and Opioid Education and Community Action Act of twenty seventeen. And bring back to this committee on January seventeenth, any recommendations to forward to the full board for action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Four point two, Policy Three. I have to put my glasses on. I'm sorry, I can't read. Let's see, four point two, Policy thirty-five zero six, Public Charter Schools. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of the proposed revisions to Policy thirty-five zero six and for the introduction of the administration staff and attendance to speak on the policy. Ms. Welsh?
So first of all, I want to say that we haven't proposed any, any revisions at this point, only because I thought it was critical that we did have the staff that are most intimately involved in the process of the charter school applications and the evaluation process and even running the charter schools come and talk to us about it. I will say that in the law, if you look in the Education Article nine dash one, one zero, it talks about the fact, though, that a county board should develop a public charter school policy and that it should include guidelines and procedures regarding evaluation of public charter schools, revocation of a charter, reporting requirements, and financial programmatic compliance audits for public charter schools. So if you look at our current policy, it is very, it's, there's, it has no detail at all in it. It's just basically, I think, what it did was cite what the law said back in two thousand and three. So, so it is going to require, I think, a significant amount of work. But I think before we get to the point of reviewing revisions, it is really important for all of us to hear from the public charter people, both this Saunders, who's the Instructional Director for the Charter Schools, and then Dr. Monica Gaines, who is the Charter School Liaison, because they're the ones that do most of the work when it comes to the evaluation process and looking at applications. And then what it is that, or what's incorporated into the agreements, and then just the whole programmatic piece in terms of the charter schools. So I don't want to waste their time or ours. I let them move forward and share their information.
Good evening. So in looking at the policy that was just shown, is there a particular place that you think it would make more sense to start at?
Are you speaking to me?
Yeah.
I don't have a particular space. I'm sort of aligned with Ms. Welsh. It looks like we need to start from scratch. So you start wherever you want to. You've given us insight into, I guess, how we're operating today. And then you, the administration will go back after we hear from you tonight and then start carving out the details.
Okay, so would I be able to share the screen?
Cindy?
Yes, you should.
So you should be able to see, just the, okay. So I think I'm just going to kind of start with the definition of a charter school, so we're all on the same page. And just, this is Maryland's law. It's not complete. But the Maryland's law defines a public charter school as a public school that's non-sectarian, chosen by parents for their children, open to all students on a space-available basis. And we cover that by the lottery and can be either a newly-created school or a conversion of an already-operating public school. And so I think in this piece, one of the most important things to know is that a public charter school operates with the approval of the local Board of Education. So the Board of Education, they are our authorizers in accordance with a written charter agreement that's executed between the local board and the entity operating the public charter school. And I can get into who operates our public charter schools in our system. And a public charter school is subject to the federal, state, and local laws prohibiting discrimination and must comply with all applicable health and safety laws. So when you look at our administrative procedures, our administrative procedures cover our charter schools, unless our charter school operators apply for a waiver. And we really don't have many of those, because our administrative procedures are truly for the safety, security, and best practices for our students and staff. So there's a couple of definitions that you hear kind of thrown around when someone talks about charter schools. And one of them is authorizer. And the authorizers are the entities that decide who can start a new charter school. They set academic and operational expectations, and they oversee school performance. And they also decide whether a charter should remain open or closed at the end of the contract. Authorizers don't operate authorized schools or make school-level decisions. The renewal is the process of continuation of operation of a charter school. And then the lottery, as you know, is the random selection process by which applicants are admitted to a charter school. Charter schools have a certain amount of seats, and we fill them through our lottery. So it's very random. And we do have two schools, or three schools, I'm sorry, with weighted lotteries. And I can get into that if people have questions around that. And so what we have, our weighted lotteries are around geographic preference. And we have three charter schools with weighted lotteries. We have Excel. Because Excel requested two waivers, and what those waivers were around were for residents living in zip code areas of Landover and East Riverdale, and also a lottery preference for eligible free and reduced meal students. And these waiver requests are in accordance with the law. College Park Academy has requested during the twenty seventeen renewal that thirty-five percent of its seats be reserved for those applicants living in the area comprising of Berwyn Heights, Cherokee Lane, Hollywood, Paint Branch, Riverdale, and University Park. College Park Academy, part of this was so there were seats being offered to residents of these areas. And imagine Andrews has a waiver around admitting students that live on the base. Imagine Andrews is our school that actually does reside on the actual military base. So we wanted to make sure that there were seats, or they wanted to make sure there were seats available for those students. This is not new information, but I just wanted to go over so you understand when I talk about a weighted lottery. So Maryland charter schools are very different from, say, charter schools in Washington, DC, because Maryland charter schools, or maybe schools that are in another part of the country. A Maryland charter school allows only one authorizer, the local Board of Education. In Maryland, the State Board hears appeals on charter applications and renewals. The purpose and expectations of charter schools is for innovation and autonomy in exchange for accountability. So you have your autonomy here, but you also have your accountability. And if you are going to work in an autonomous matter, manner, it's really important that there is student achievement. All Maryland charter school students must participate in our Maryland State Accountability System, which is our Maryland Performance Program. Public charter school staff are employees of the local school system. So if you are a teacher in a charter school, you are considered a Prince George's County Public School employee. And they are represented by the local bargaining units. And our charter operators can apply for waivers only during their initial or renewal application. And these waivers have to be approved if they intend to operate outside any of our administrative procedures or COMA regulations. And then the funding is similar to other public schools for charter schools. So this is where we kind of get into the process. And it kind of went through, when you look at the A through H in the policy, and the process always starts out with the application. So a group or a nonprofit decides that they'd like to start a charter school in Prince George's County. That has to start with a letter of intent. After that letter of intent, we offer them what is known as a prospectus, and that's a chance for them to actually tell us, like, what's your school about? It's kind of like an executive summary of their school. It's very to-the-point, succinct. We encourage that. We take the prospectus process very seriously, because if we evaluate your prospectus, and when we evaluate a prospectus, we pull together a team of content area experts depending on whatever the theme is of your school. So if you say that you want to open up a charter school that has to do with STEM, we are going to pull our STEM staff together, which means we work with different departments. It's not just Dr. Gaines and I. We work with content level, content area experts. We go through the prospectus, and then we rate it, and then we make a decision on whether or not you are invited to apply. So before you even are able to apply, you have to go through a pretty rigorous process, because running and operating a school is not something that you can kind of do on the fly. And so once we do that, you are invited to apply for a charter school if you pass our prospectus and your ratings line up. After that, we go through to the application. And this just shows you the calendar. The letter of intent and prospectus are annually due to us the first Monday in August. So if you are interested in opening up a charter school, you have to provide that to us by the first Monday in August. The full application, if we were to evaluate it and decide that we were going to invite you to apply, would be due the second Friday annually in January. And then we have one hundred twenty days to pull together a team to evaluate the application plus a capacity interview for the applicant and make a recommendation or, you know, make a recommendation. And this also comes from executive leadership to the board. And then the Board of Education would decide whether or not this group would be able to go forth with operating in our school system. And if anyone has any questions, please stop me. But this just shows you the process and how the whole process, once we say, and you hand in your application, it cannot take longer than one hundred twenty days. So on our side, we have to make sure we fully evaluate it. We have to make sure we have the capacity interview. So on our side, we have to make sure we fully evaluate it. We have to make sure we have the capacity interview. And that we also work with executive staff to make a recommendation. And then the decision must be rendered. If the decision isn't rendered within one hundred twenty days, the applicant can appeal to the State Board of Education. The second piece would be onboarding. So you are got your approval from the Board of Education, and you want to open your school. Well, there's a lot that has to take place during that onboarding piece. And in that onboarding is when we start really working on the operating agreement. And that's the agreement that has forty-two different items in it that are around being able to operate a school in Prince George's County. And then we also work on pre-opening activities. So we pull in our facilities team. We pull in our health, food, nutrition. We pull in our health services, and we really go through everything with these groups. So they really understand what it takes to operate a school. And it also is around our HR practices. It's around what is your curriculum gonna look like? So we have very lengthy, rigorous meetings. So they understand our expectations when operating a school. The next piece after that would be around the monitoring and the oversight. And I just want to make sure that we kind of talk about that. So during the term that they're operating, we monitor for the areas of compliance in academic, financial, and operational measures for each of the schools. We require financial audits. We monitor their student achievement through stat meetings, through school visits, through our whole entire evaluation process, through school performance planning, and we have operational checklist throughout the year. And if a deficiency is noticed, we do provide guidance to them in writing. And we communicate our expectations and how that they're to move forward. And we also provide technical assistance once we are made aware that there may be some sort of deficiency. And we make sure that we solicit feedback from our schools and our operators around the technical assistance we provide. So an example of that is Dr. Gaines and I are actually hosting a charter school principals' meeting tomorrow. And in that meeting, we will be providing professional development. We'll be providing some compliance and operations materials. We also gather with our charter school operators and provide compliance materials to them. And also lay out our expectations. But it's also a communicative thing because they also speak to us about the areas that they wish to know more around or areas that they have questions around. So there's a lot of back-and-forth communication between the schools and our office and the operators and our office. And then we get into renewal. And this is very timely because this year, we actually do have five schools that are up for renewal that will be onboard agendas with recommendations around renewal for the board to actually make decisions around. And with the renewal, the first piece of that is the letter of intent, and that's before the renewal cycle even begins. And then after that, a renewal application is filled out. So in the renewal process, there is a notice of intent. There's a performance review and site visit where we visit the school to actually gather evidence around what they say that they're doing in their renewal application and making sure that it's aligned. And we use an external vendor for this. And so it's really helpful because we get a lot of objective information during these site visits. And then we go ahead and look through the renewal application. We evaluate it. And then we debrief with the operator and the school staff around our review of the findings. And then we review it one more time. And then we make our, you know, we provide our notes and the things that we've done to executive leadership. And then the CEO does make a recommendation to the board, and then the board will deliberate and make a final decision around renewal. And just so you understand what that renewal team looks like, I did want to kind of review that. In the past, until 2021, we used a mix of internal Prince George's County Public Schools content supervisors and external consultants, and we used internal school leaders. And moving forward, we began this in 2021. We did put out an RFP and select an external consultant. And just the capacity of the public charter school office is one of two people. We have two people in the office. We also wanted to have an experienced, efficient, skilled, non-biased group that really understands charter school programs and monitoring and oversight and did it more than just for our system. So that was our rationale with moving to an external consultant. And they are working very well in assisting us with the renewal process. And then just when you see the final renewal application, there are ratings, and those ratings are meets, partially meets, and does not meet for each area of the renewal application. And the renewal application is kind of something where the school really has to reflect the school inclusive of the operator and the board of the school on the past charter term. And they also have to really reflect on the charter term and what they're going to do in the next charter school, in the next charter term. And how are they going to meet the expectations around student achievement and carry out their plans effectively? This is just a screen that kind of gives you the information on our public charter schools that exist now. And the names of our operators, and we have five of them. One of them is the operator that we call CLF, which is Chesapeake Lighthouse Foundation. They operate five charter schools in our district. They have a K through twelve span. CMIT North Elementary, Middle School, and High School. And then CMIT South Elementary, Middle School, High School. And so it just shows you that it's CMIT, the K through twelve north has around six, has a projection of around one thousand six hundred eighty. CMIT South has a projection of one thousand four hundred forty. This, we also have College Park Academy that operate, their operator is College Park. They are a six through twelve. And they have a six hundred eighty-one projection. It also has their signature programs. Um, college, uh, CMIT's West STEM, College Parks Academy. There is blended, theirs is blended learning, and they have a partnership with University of Maryland. We have Excel Academy. The operator is Seed. And they are International Baccalaureate Candidate School. And then Legends, their operator is Equity Now, and they are a Financial Literacy is their signature program. We also have the operator Imagine Schools. They operate four schools. They're all K through eights. Imagine Lincoln, Imagine Andrews, Imagine Leland, and Imagine Morningside. And they each have different signature programs. Imagine Lincoln's is the house system. Imagine Andrews serves the unique needs of military families. Leland does a lot with avid and college prep, and Imagine Morningside does microsociety. And just an example of some of the data that our charter schools can opt in or out of, which is kind of an example of their autonomy. Imagine Schools uses STAR to measure growth, whereas Prince George's County Public Schools use benchmarks. And our CLF, which is our CMIT's, they use NWEA to measure growth. And these are just two examples. But our schools are required to collect data on attendance, any MSDE state report card data, PSAT, tag testing, disciplines, special education students, and all of the data on their progress, and then five oh four students. And this is just kind of going into the communication that our office has with the different levels. We have, um, we have observed in the past charter school boards, and we've completed those and given feedback. We have charter school operator meetings where we exchange information. We have presented to different committees and the Board of Education. We also, part of our office is we supervise the principals. So we're in charge of their evaluations. Our principals participate in district-wide professional developments. We do work with parents on expressed concerns. We participate in school activities. And we do offer technical assistance as well as professional development to address immediate issues or concerns. And this is just a slide that I kind of just like to show where um, it kind of shows that students and families are at the tip. They're kind of in the seat. And it really is between the authorizers and the charter schools and the operator's role to create, to communicate a program that provides results and execute it for the operators. The charter school's role is to execute the program and provide results. And the authorizer's main responsibility is to provide oversight of the school's performance and results in academics, finance, operations, and compliance. And just in how, you know, we can gather support is just familiarity with the total cycle of authorizing from new charter school applications to renewal, holding operators accountable for proven student outcomes that meet or exceed the district, as well as the philosophy around charter schools. If there are non-negotiables around charter schools opening, their performance and closing, that's really important for our office to know so we can make sure that we as well communicate those. And these are, this is our contact information. If anybody has any questions about, you know, what we do or how we do it. And just at this time, if anyone has any questions, we are here to answer them.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, board members, do you have any questions? Okay, hearing none. I have a couple. I recall last year that the Board of Education had to decide whether or not to renew some some of the contracts. I also recall that there were some challenges within some of those schools. What I have not seen since that moment in time is any present presentation to the Board of Education on where those schools are with performance, with student performance. So my ask is, as we create this policy, is do you routinely project to report out to this board? And let's say after the holiday, is there anything planned to report out to this board this school year? Before you ask us to renew a contract?
It's my understanding that we are doing a presentation inclusive of updated data in March. That's my understanding.
All right. Uh, so then now my ask is of you, Ms. Welsh. I think based on the presentation, there is enough information for the administration to start pulling together a, a policy that is more delineated of what our board responsibilities are as we look at these charter schools. And I think we kind of need that before March if they're going to bring some information to us that at some point we have, we need to evaluate. Okay.
Okay.
Board members, do any of the board members have any insight you want to offer for the administration to go back and work on? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made today. And also keep Mr. Whitley included in whatever you're doing and provide the presentation that we had received today to all of the committee members so that we can have it uh, as you guys move forward. Okay? So if you would bring back to the P and G committee, I mean, the the Policy and Governance Committee, scheduled for January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, the recommendations. And I don't think we'll be ready to forward it. I think it's, it will continue to be a discussion. At least that is what I'm thinking. Because we really are starting this policy from scratch. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, guys. All right, we'll go to four point two. Policy, um, I mean, four point three, Policy Eighty One Hundred, Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups. I will yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an update to the proposed revisions for Policy Eighty One Hundred.
Uh, Madam Chair, may I ask the question, is it okay for Ms. Saunders and, and Dr. Gaines to leave the meeting?
Oh, of course.
I mean, if they want to stay, they can stay. But if they, but now that they presented.
Okay, and I thank you. And I wasn't sure if Ms. Gaines wanted to offer any words of wisdom or if it was sufficient, uh, the information that you provided us. So, uh, but please feel free to leave. And thank you so much. We appreciate your stopping by.
Okay, thank you for the up.
All right, bye-bye. Right, Ms. Welsh, Eighty One Hundred.
Okay, Eighty One Hundred. Um, so Eighty One Hundred is up for discussion today. And it is, um, I did go through and I made some, some revisions. Mainly it's reorganization more than anything, but I will go through and point out what I have done. But I also had questions throughout the, the policy that I felt was important to get your input because it is your policy, because it's about your standing committees and your work groups. So.
Excuse me, Robin. Let me acknowledge that, um, board member Zippora Miller is on the call. And this is a policy that I would like for her to really give us some, some insight. Okay, so I just wanted to acknowledge that she is here from the Academic Committee, Chair of the Academic Committee. Okay?
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you.
Okay, so move forward.
Okay, um, so first of all, I did add in language under the policy statement that reflects um, mission and vision of the, um, of our strategic plan, the school system strategic plan. Because, um, you know, our policies, that's what, that's what we're about, is what we're trying to accomplish in the strategic plan. So I did incorporate that. And the standing committees and the work groups really are, uh, pieces of all of that in terms of moving forward in the, um, in the completion and implementation of the strategic plan. Um, Cindy, can you just scroll down, please? And some of this is, a lot of this, if you don't see it either marked out or underlined, it means this was just language that was previously there. But if you would continue down, Cindy. I did add, I did add, I have not included the definition yet for Presiding Officer, but I did put in the definition for Standing Committee. Can you move up one second, please? One little, for focus work group, because we didn't have any definitions in the policy. And then if you can scroll further down. And so it talks about the standing committees that we have. And then from there, it goes into what the committee meeting appointments are. So if you scroll down, Cindy, it tells you that every, uh, board member can serve on one standing committee. Um, and there should be at least four board members, but no more than five on a standing committee. And that you need to have three committee members in order to have a quorum. Again, this is all language I was there before. And the student board member may serve as a member of any standing committee. Um, the board chair can serve as a voting member, one of the standing committees, and shall be an ex officiator, non-voting member on the remaining standing committees. And then it talks about the terms of the committee appointments, and this is where I do have some questions. So it says the appointments will start on July one. Um, and members may be appointed committees. A board member may chair a standing committee only for two consecutive years. It says here, the, so the current policy says the board will meet annually in July to determine committee assignments. Well, my understanding is that July is really a month that the board does not meet. So if in fact that's the case, I cross that July and put in June. If, in fact, you think you want to keep July, that's fine. But, um, this past year, except for, we had a special meeting. Uh, the Policy and Governance Committee meeting dip, uh, meeting, committee did. the Policy and Governance Committee meeting, committee did, but I don't, in general, the board did not. So I would say that the decision related to the committee appointments should occur in June. And, and as we go through the discussion, then you can certainly let me know. That talks about that each board member, how you would get appointed to a committee is that you give your two top committee assignments with your preferences. And then the, the board will vote to determine membership of the committee based on that information. And then if they're, if you don't get elected to your top committee preference, you can indicate a second preference. And then the board will attempt to assign you to a member of what your second committee choice might be. As far as new board members coming in, this is important because we do have a new board member today listening. So when they, when they come to, when they come forward as on the board, then they shall submit their top two committee assignment preferences. Because we've also lost board members. So these members then will be assigned based on preference, any existing committee vacancies or voluntary transfers. And the board will vote to determine which committee each new board member will be assigned. So that would be something then that the Board of Education would move forward with. And then, and, and this happens frequently. We have board members though who attend the meetings, but not as observers. They're not a member of the committee and they cannot vote. But they, they are allowed to provide input at the, by the approval of the committee chair. So this is all language that was there. Keep scrolling down, Cindy. And then it talks about committee officers. And there is confusion in this policy because up there it talks about, about, about it being in July. And we have in August, but if you come down, or June, if you come down here, keep going. Committee officers, the chair and vice chair of each committee shall be selected by the board in June. And then a little further back down, it talks about in August. So the question would be, when would the chair and the vice chair of each of the committees be appointed? Would it be once the appointments are made for, you know, who's going to be on the committee? And then at the same time in that June meeting, you would go ahead and appoint your off, the officers? Or is that something that would happen in August after you come back as a committee? So that's just something also to think about. Can you scroll up one little sec, one little bit? I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. And if you are going to, if you are interested in being a chair or vice chair, then it's your responsibility to express your vision and plans and what your experiences have been. So that would be, it would cause the people to think that you are the best candidate for being the chair or the co-chair of the, or vice chair of the committee. So then if you move further down, as far as administrative staff attendance, I did make one change. And I'm not sure why it hasn't shown up here, but the chief executive officer shall designate one. It did say one executive committee member on her executive cabinet, an executive cabinet member. And that's not necessarily the case. Like for, a perfect example is this, this committee. I am definitely not, I am an executive staff member, but I'm not an executive cabinet member. So I think it's really about who is the appropriate person at the executive level that would be, that the CEO would designate. So I did make that change. And then I also made the change where it had said that if you go down to B where it said the, I think it was called the Executive Director, which I think the Board of Education used to have an executive director. Instead, I have, and Mr. Newsom, please tell me if this is incorrect, but I said the Director of the Board of Education Staff Office would designate a board member to support each committee. So I did make that change. And now here's where I had another concern. So each committee shall meet at least every other month, beginning in August, where, and that's where we have a little confusion, where the August meeting is used to select committee leadership to begin to craft the committee work plan. So the question again is, should the committee leadership be chosen in June or should it be chosen in August? So that's something to discuss. And then it goes on to say, and this is the committees do do this, that they report three times a year. And then keep scrolling down, Cindy, and you'll see the different dates for the different committee meetings. You have your introduction, which happened this past fall. And then during winter, you'll have the progress report of the different committees. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, at the end of the year, then each of the committees talks about what they accomplished during the past school year. And then there's a whole section on purpose of Standing Committee. So if you would scroll down, Cindy, again. So here I did make, actually, most of this is the language that was already there. The only thing is that I did where it said the Academic Achievement Committee is charged with oversight. If you go back to our policy on oversight, we were very clear that it's not the board's role to be actually providing the oversight per se, but instead working collaboratively with the administration to explore. And then it goes into all the different areas, which was there previously, and keeps scrolling down. I will add, let me just point out number two, though I did add in language that comes from our strategic plan. So where it says attain educational excellence, providing every PGPS student with premier education, characterized by innovative, relevant, accessible learning and development opportunities that build twenty-first century competencies. And then I, we had this before, effective and timely parent and community engagement. But I think that is a critical piece that, that was part of that committee. Now, this is, I have this highlighted because I have a question. It's in the, in the current policy, it says upon adoption of any academic extracurricular and parent and community engagement policies by the Board of Education, the academic committee shall monitor the implementation of the policies. So I, I think some for discussion is, is this really the function of the Academic Achievement Committee? So I wanted to point that out. And then if you scroll further down. Again, I did change oversight to reviewing because actually the law is very clear that it is the responsibility of the CEO to have oversight over all the fiscal affairs of the school system. So instead I have with reviewing issues involving school systems, organizations. And then the rest of this is language. I did, I do not know the answer to this question. And if anyone knows, that would be helpful. What is an MBE and LBE Advisory Council? Because I'd like to really spell it out. I did ask a few people questions and no one seemed to know. So if maybe Dennis, you know, I don't know, but we, I need to find out because I don't think it's good just to have MBE and LBE if we don't know what those terms mean. And then we come to our committee, Policy and Governance Committee. I didn't, I didn't touch that language. This is actually just a revision. It's just a reorganization, keep moving further down. And then it also talks in, in this policy about developing a legislative agenda in December of each year. So that, and maybe we really want, I don't know if we want to keep the date December, maybe January, I don't know. But that's something we might want to discuss. And then if you keep scrolling down. This is, and then it says that the Chair of the Policy and Governance Standing Committee will be the board's liaison to the Maryland Association of Board of Ed's Legislative Committee, which is the case because our Madam Chair is also the liaison for the MAB's Legislative Committee. So we have that. And then the next thing is Focus Work Groups, which I did not, I really accept to reorganize and put it down here. I think there's very minimal changes. If you just scroll down, you won't see anything. Keep going, Cindy. I think there might be, I want to keep going, a little piece. Again, it says the CEO should designate one executive staff member versus an actual cabinet, executive cabinet member. And then I did put language in about the Director of the Board of Education Staff Office because they had executive director and I changed that. Other than that, that is about the only changes I've made at this point. And I have actually posed several questions for you all to discuss and, and let me know what you think. So that's it.
Okay, see, I'm trying to be good because my husband's in this room making a lot of noise. So I was trying to not, that y'all hear him. Now, Alvaro Serran Ruiz, Vice Chair.
Yeah, so in terms of the selection of committees being in June, I believe the process was set for it to be in July because annually, when the student board member is elected, their swear is at the end of June. And so they don't officially start their term until July first. So I think the practice was that a meeting, like a special type meeting would be hosted in July so that all members would be able to select their committees. I do think you bring up a good point about selecting leadership in that same meeting. I'm not sure if that has been the practice. But if so, you know, continuing that, where in the same day that committees are announced, that leadership just be chosen and we don't wait till August. That way, once August meeting comes, you get to work. Yeah.
Are you finished, Ms. Vice Chair? Thank you. Board Member Boozer Strather.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just wanted to provide some context to when some of these changes were made two years ago, starting in November through Policy and Governance and then the December meeting in twenty twenty. The goals of the drafter at the time were to essentially, and it's all in video, of course, to end all the committees and reconstitute them under that, that former board member's idea of, of who they thought should sit in these seats. And, and then, I mean, none of this never really went as it should. I mean, previously, the, the chair, the, the function of a chair is to manage this board and the function is to work with the board members to put forward their, previously you put forward your two preferences and, and also your demonstration of leadership or desire for leadership in a chair or vice chair seat in the chair. Manage that in all practicality. This policy never did really cover, you know, when new board members come on. I mean, the chair, the, in the last two years, the chair essentially has worked with any new board member for, you know, their seats and position. And we did reach that June, that where board members did raise their hand if they wanted to serve and where they wanted to serve. But essentially, the chair and vice chair managed it because this just wasn't practical. The, when this was first implemented, the, essentially, the, there's no one to run this meeting. The, this concept of democratic was nothing but that. I mean, there's no difference going into a meeting and having a board majority just declare for you where you will sit. And that is exactly what happened. It was less democratic than having an open process with a chair during executive session or whenever we did it to all, to talk about, you know, where you thought you had, you were a good fit for this board. And so the previous version, as of that November, December was, is, is of course in our records. And that is that the chair, you know, works with all the board members to constitute leadership in the committee. The change to June, starting July one, is, you know, I don't think, I think that's neither here nor there, as long as it's aligned. I think that some of that, just aligning it, as Robin, Ms. Welsh says, we need to do. And if the student board member is already assigned to, I thought the student board member is already pre-assigned to academic and governance. So, you know, let's get into that detail because the student board member is automatically in those seats. So I'm not sure why we have to wait and create special meetings for this. But I do think we need to seriously consider going back to, you know, the Chair of the Board managing the committee process through what was much more open process than it was after this was implemented. But I believe it was implemented for short-term political goals at the time, two years ago. And it was never meant to be practical. So I think we need to take some ownership here and make it practical again and get some of those alignments. I do, I'm not surprised you found the Focus Work Groups to be in good shape. In twenty nineteen, the board members worked very collaboratively on this new idea of a Focus Work Group for the twenty nineteen version of this. And I know I've gone through the whole process and used the policy at times. And I believe it was really good. And I'll just double check for myself, like if there's any recommendations I would make. But, you know, I think our biggest thing here is, you know, getting back to how boards function and the chair does lead the constitution of committees and committee leadership. And I think we need to, you know, work on that. So that, that is what I would like to call out on this.
Okay, are you finished, Board Member Boozer Strather?
I'm finished.
Okay, would, would you like to make a recommendation specifically to what you would like administration to include in this document?
I would like administration to revert back to the twenty nineteen version where the chair constitutes the committees and committee leadership. I mean, I think that's the most practical, you know, edit, you know, way to say the edit is, go back to the version of twenty nineteen and, you know, make that, and get rid of all of this, like, give speeches and stuff, none of that ever happened. This is never practical, it's never meant to be.
Okay, so Ms. Welsh, do you understand Board Member Boozer Strather's recommendation?
I do, and I will be, I'll go back and pull up the previous policy to see what it's.
Okay, and Board Member, Vice Chair Alvaro Serran Ruiz, are you in agreement that that's an approach?
I would just want to see this twenty nineteen document. If we're, you know, the line is to rib twenty nineteen, just to see it.
Okay, so Cindy, Cindy, can you get us all that document, please? The twenty nineteen version of eighty-one hundred, I guess it still has the number, right? Robin?
Yeah, I would think so, yes.
Okay, so if you could send that to us, Cindy, that would be helpful. So the, so what we're requesting thus far is that the administration, when you come back to us next for Policy and Governance Committee meeting, that you have incorporated it. It's still a discussion item, but we want to see what it looks like, see what it feels like, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Now, Board Member, Dr. Zavor, Zavor Miller, I had not forgotten about you.
No, I didn't, I didn't think you had. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I think that what I was going to speak on, Board Member Boozer Strather already addressed. I, it was my first time seeing that we submit our names, make a speech. And I was like, so I, I was going to ask, is this the only way? Basically, it's been taken care of. I would want to say, I think there was a part where it asked for the committee chair to be appointed in August. I wonder if that can be done sooner. I'm just throwing that out there. Because if the work needs to begin in August, I think Student Board Member Serron Ruiz had recommended it's done at the same meeting, which would make sense.
Yeah, and, and I guess my ask around this is, previously, was it done in December? I'm asking you, Pamela Booze, Board Member Boozer Strathers, that I think you kind of alluded to something happening in December.
You know, I, we'd have to go back to some records of that. When I joined the board in December of twenty eighteen, really started the work in nineteen, seated board members asked at the time, new chair, Dr. Thornton, to go through a process on our committees. We actually changed committees, you know, there was, a lot had happened. And it was very, we did a retreat. It was a very robust process. It was a very collaborative process of the full board. So the version at April of twenty nineteen reflects after that process. So then we, then we constituted ourselves and got to the work. So I, you know, I haven't really been through like a normal, you know, year, so that's what I would say.
Okay, then that was helpful. So Ms. Welsh, take the recommendations from the board members that you've heard thus far. But I need to address one thing. In, there's something here that says on page six point nine, I think I'm on the same page, Ms. Welsh, where it says upon adoption, and this is the academic committee, upon adoption of academic extracurricular and parent community engagement policies by the Board of Education, that the committee shall monitor the implementation of those policies. It is my understanding it should be the board of a whole, not the committee. So my recommendation for you to include coming back is that you change it. Just take that out. Just take that out. Uh, board member, uh, Zaporah Miller, Dr. Miller, are you in agreement? I mean, Dr. Miller, Dr. Miller. Zaporah Miller, I know that you're not on the committee, but you are the chair of the academic committee.
Can you repeat? Can you re- can you repeat it again?
Okay, in the docu- in the policy on page six of nine.
Thank you for putting it out, thanks.
Okay, yeah, that yellow part, upon adoption of academic extracurricular and parent and community. Engagement policies, the Board of Education, the committee shall monitor the implementation of the policy. And what I am saying and suggesting is that I believe that should be the whole board. Uh, when I first saw it, I'm, I mean, I, I just don't think that should be. So what do you think? Your thoughts?
Agreed. I mean, we may serve as a, but I think it should be the whole board. I agree.
Okay, thank you then. Uh, so any more uh conversation, discussion, board members around policy eighty-one hundred?
Uh, can this, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Cause this speaks to adoption of system-wide, whether it's extracurricular activities or parent community. It's not necessarily for a subset.
Correct.
Okay, then, then, yeah, then I would agree, so.
Okay, correct. So um. I need to see everybody's face again, Cindy. I, okay, there we go. So board members, oh, uh, Robin has her hand up. Robin, okay.
I I just have one question. I want to get clarification. So what I did hear was that. For the actual appointment of the committee members and appointment of the leadership of each of the committee members, that would occur in June. As what I thought was the last word versus waiting to August to appoint the leadership and by getting it done in advance. Then we'd be ready to start. Each of the committees would be ready to start working in August. Now, my question. Has to do with the student board member because I, what I thought I heard was that. They're not actually, we don't know who that per- board member is until till July. Is that true or I, I'm trying to understand that piece of it.
Uh, Alvarez, okay, Alvarez, Doran.
So, we know by, I want to say by the end of May, we already know the results. Um, that individual isn't sworn in until the end of June and their term doesn't officially start to July first. Because that's when the um former student board member's term ends on July first. Um, and so. In terms of the committee assignments, the student board members able to select which committee, which two committees they would like to serve on. Um, typically, it's been um, they select academic achievement and policy and governance. Um, I believe there's also been cases where they selected to just serve on one committee. Um, but then also, you know, you may have a student board member who wants to serve on ABFA. Um, and so that is why I believe, you know, I think the July worked because. Um, they would already be board members and um they get that opportunity to. Um, collaborate with board members after being sworn in, um, be, go through board member training. Um, learn about the committees and make a decision um when it comes to that meeting in July.
Okay, well, I'm leaning towards August. I appreciate uh the the uh information that you shared, Vice Chair. Alvaro Saran Ruiz. But I also need to see what that policy, two years ago or twenty nineteen, that policy that we're looking at. Because I'm sure somewhere in that policy, it dealt with the student because the students were on board, I believe. With the Board of Education. So, we will continue to have the, oh, I'm sorry, Pamela Booze is Strathers, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, the documents will, you know, verify this, but it's my understanding that the student member of the board had automatic seats on academic achievement. And policy and governance, and so they would enter into that on July one. I don't think they ever served on ABFA because they can't.
They can't vote, that's what I was thinking too.
So I think that, that's why that is. So, but let's let the document trail.
Right.
Validate all that, but that is my understanding and that's why. If, it makes a lot of sense to me at the end of our cycle in June that we reconstitute committees and leadership. We know our student board member automatically serves. Because sometimes things happen in July. I think most of us don't want special meetings. We would like our six-week break. But it happens. So I think just getting it all done at June twenty-nine where we all start on July one or whatever that date is, makes sense.
Okay, I I will say this, having had to meet last July was not fun. So, I'm definitely leaning towards not doing that again. So, um, Alvaro, uh, Vice Chair Alvaro Saran Ruiz, uh, what I hear is that you want choices for the students. Correct? Instead of it uh being included as a uh requirement for you guys, you student members. To be a part of both of those committees. Is is that true? Cause if it's not, then it's simple enough to put you on those committees and we'll be done with it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so if the current process isn't that they pick, um. Then I would want the choice to be made available um in the case. You know, the student board member does eventually get full voting rights, um, and they do get, you know. A vote when it comes to the budget. I don't want policy limiting them, you know, further on.
I I respect that, okay.
I mean, to make that the policy change.
Okay, so, Miss Welch, as you go forward, I suggest we look at August. Because I do not believe that there's any board member after experiencing it last year. Who would want to come and work during the month of July, okay? Uh, board member Boozer Strathers, I understand uh your suggestion of June. So what we will look at with the next discussion after we see how the twenty nineteen policy. Moves us toward a more fluid process. Then we'll continue this discussion. Okay, board member Boozer Strather?
I, I just want to make sure I'm clear about what you're saying. Is it only about the student member? Are we talking about like this gap between constituting committees and who's leading them? Because that feels very messy to me.
Yeah, I think that if if what I understood you to say, when we go back to this other policy twenty nineteen. That policy codifies how they stood up the committees at that moment in time, correct? It's what I believe. And that's why I've asked for that policy, Miss uh Allen. Adeline to send that to all of us because we can read that and then we can see and be prepared for the next discussion. So, I am simply speaking now for the August. For the student, not the uh entire process.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm only trying to address. Um, what Al uh board Vice Chair Alvaro uh Saran Ruiz has requested, and that's for all students going forward. Now, the policy in my mind should codify when we stand up the committees and how that is to be done. So we, but we have to look at it and see, cause I don't know right now. I only know what I experienced. Uh, board member Zaporah Miller. Doctor Zaporah Miller, I'm sorry.
That's, no, that's fine. Um, thank you so much. Um. In thinking about August, I just wanted to um. Have you consider also that in August is when they do new teacher orientations, uh, the administrative staff is. Inundated with opening school. And once we have the committee chair and we want to start putting together a work plan. I know for academic achievement, I had to reach out to um the chief academic officer and we had to work together. Having been made chair in June, I believe it was during our retreat, made it.
Easier.
It made it easier for us to put together a work plan, run it by the committee. And then any changes we wanted to put in place, take it back to the chief academic officer. So by August, we had a working work plan. Um, I think it would be a challenge, and I don't want to speak for the admin, but I think it will be a challenge if they're trying to open school. And also trying to meet with us to put together our work plan. That being said, sorry, that being said, it also pres- presents a challenge with giving the student choice.
Okay, I think we can do them both. I don't think it has to be the or. I think we can take care of the committee chairs and the, and the a- all of that in um. In June. And uh, now, uh, the student board member in August. But we need to further discuss that because right now, because I don't know what they used to do. I'm just not sure right now. So let's look at that. And then if we take it to the full board, if if the board wants to come back in July. We will be back in July, but I don't want to come back in July. I'm just putting that on table. I'm being very honest here. Cause I did that last year and and you, it's hard to plan your vacation and stuff around that. So. We, this policy will still be in discussion at our next meeting, okay? Everyone, please read the previous policy from twenty nineteen. And then we'll be better prepared to complete this discussion. And what I would ask for Vice Chair Alvaro Saran Ruiz. Think outside the box and help us resolve your problem without us working in summer. Okay?
I will put something together.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, so any other questions, comment?
So, so just to be clear, we uh, I will take all this information plus look at the old policy and put. What my best thoughts in terms of all this whole conversation and then we will be bringing it back as a discussion item.
As a discussion item, correct, discussion. Okay, thank you guys. So now we will move to policy. Four point four, board part dialogue ninety-three sixty, meetings of the board. Do you need a break, Miss Welsh? Cause I need to come back to you.
No, I'm fine, but I think, I think Mr. Newsom will, is going to start off, I think, in the conversation about ninety-three sixty.
Okay, so you want me to toss it to, okay, that's fine.
Thank.
Well, I was tossing it to you to to update us and then toss it to um.
Well, I can do that.
Okay, then, let's.
I'll be glad to do that. Um, thank you. So we, um. The last board meeting that, I mean, the last committee meeting we had, we did present ninety-three sixty and many of the changes, but there were questions. Uh, actually even among ourselves, Mr. Newsom and myself. And so it was suggested we take it back and relook at certain aspects of it. So there were. So we did make some changes to this policy um as it relates to some areas that were uh didn't. Include all the information or wasn't accurate. So I will just, I, I guess if Cindy, if you wanna, I, it's gonna be difficult because it's. Like so many changes and stuff, but if you could just go through, if you could uh to scroll down and I think it's on page six. If you, that thing is the first area where we made an additional change. And then, Mr. Newsom, if I'm missing things, you need to jump in. But right back, go back up right here. So, uh, back down to the highlighted area, please. So I, I highlighted like, highlighted this because if you look at um. Four one, uh, education article four one zero seven, it says that the board should have an annual meeting on the first Monday in December and elected chair and a vice chair. Among its members by means of an individually recorded vote. However, that is absolutely what we are not doing as a, as the board. The board's actually voting. Uh, what, Thursday um for uh to to make a determination. So I'm wondering if I, I, even though it is. I know that also they passed three dash one zero zero four, which talks about that the chair and the vice chair will be elected. Uh, every, for every two years. The term is a two-year term. So there is a contradiction in the law. So I, it, I'm. My guess is, is that we're actually applying three dash ones or zero four. Maybe Dennis can respond to this also. And this annual meeting section needs to come out. I don't know. I saw, I'm posing that as a question. And Dennis, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on this?
Can we just simply make it biannual meeting? Then it would be consistent and it would say, uh, beginning on the first Monday. In December, and then it would be consistent with both.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we will do that. And then, um, I will, they, if you uh, if, if, if you go back up um. To the agenda section. We can find agenda. And maybe I, this is such a, uh, keep, and then it might be further down, keep.
I was gonna say, I think it's.
I think it's down, okay. If you can move further down, please, to agenda, it might be page seven.
Yeah, it's on seven, okay. It's on seven. I see it. C, seven C.
Yeah, okay, so i- in the agenda preparation section, um, if you go, if the previous one we had, the last time, uh, meeting, we had. It's under first reader was all this language about if in fact there was an emergency item on the agenda. But there's no real wa- and that there's no real language that addresses emer- putting emergency items on the agenda, the process. And and how it gets there and whatever. And so, uh, what we did was move it from first reader, anything related to emergency items. And moved it over under agenda preparation. So if you scroll down a little bit, uh, Cindy. You'll see, uh.
In the green.
Yeah, the, in the red of the, if a, an item to be in a um, uh, emergency adoption of agenda by at least two-thirds vote, uh. As a matter of treated as an, an emergency. So, that, that is all language that came out of first reader. And we put it over under the agenda because generally speaking, my, my, and listening to board meetings and stuff, that's generally where it ha- occurs also. Is in the beginning when you're identifying uh emergency items. And then if you continue. That a little bit further to page eight. Oh, uh, and it right here, stop right here, number eight. So we didn't have anything in this that talked about that the board ha- the board has the vote to adopt the agenda for the meeting. So, I did put that sentence in that says, following the board prayer and pledge of allegiance in a regular board meeting, the board will vote to adopt the agenda for the meeting. Uh, which is just what actually happens. And then if we go further down into consent agenda, if you'll just scroll down through this section. What uh was taken out, keep scrolling, please. Anything that had any language to do with the cost, uh, like money related to contracts and everything, all of that was removed. Because when you all pass a policy thirty-three twenty-three um purchasing, you incorporated all that language into that policy. So I think that's the policy that should have the purchasing information. You can certainly talk about items that you're going to. Uh, uh, might, might sit on a cons- consent agenda, but you don't need to have the details there because you already have it sitting over in the purchasing. Uh, policy. And then if you continue to proceed. To page ten. Okay. And it, you know, under quorum and adoption of formal action, can, I think if it's scrolled down a little bit further. There. And so actually, um, and I must give credit to Madame Chair because she's the one that picked this up. So it's currently says the board may not implement a policy, but actually it, the word may needs to come out and the word shall needs to put in. Because if you look at education article four dash four oh two, that is actually the responsibility of the CEO. So, um, and it's very specific language about taking uh, uh, moving forward with a policy. That relates to this. The other thing is, is that they're talking here about appeals four two of fives and six two two. That is not very clear language. So what I'd like to do is make a change there so that you'll see that for six two oh two. The board is actually um hearing, is hearing a hearing, is in a hearing related to the recommendation. Of the superintendent to terminate or to suspend a certificated employee. And then for four dash two oh five, that would be any decision made by the CEO or. Her, his or her designate relate to any kind of controversies uh in or disputes, including. Uh, the dismissal or termination of non-certificated staff. So then when you read this language, it's not very clear. So I'd like to clarify that language.
Okay.
And then, and change that. And then. I see if there's any other changes. Uh, we did, if you, uh, view scroll down, Cindy, to page eleven. All of that language we took out as of December uh second twenty twenty-four. Um, because um, that, we, that's, we don't, the work group is working on all this at this point related to the bill that was passed last year. So I think for, at this point, it's probably important, it's actually confusing to have it sitting in there and it would be. Better to have it removed at this point because it's not being implemented. And then continue forward. Uh, a little bit further till we get to minutes.
Yeah, okay, got it. Well.
I think.
Minutes and Records, twelve J.
Yeah, under, uh, yes, tw- on page twelve, minutes and records. I think the only other thing that was happen, we tried to. There was some language there. I think the only other thing that was happen, we tried to, there was some language there, like it said, the official unofficial meanings of public board meeting shall be carefully recorded by the designated board office staff. However, we talked about the official meetings of all public board meetings shall be audio and visually recording. So that's recorded. So that's a sort of confusing when we're saying that the official minutes are the audio and visual recording. And then we're saying unofficial minutes are carefully uh recorded by the designated board office staff. So instead, uh, we incorporate the word were just taken instead of uh recorded so that there is no confusion there. And I think. Oh, and then I did under the if you scroll down in the committee area. I did also add uh under the committee meetings, if you keep the next page, please. I did add that uh the committee shall vote to adopt the agenda for the committee meeting because in our committee meetings, that's exactly what happens there. You do vote to adopt that agenda. And then I also uh did talk about if you scroll down slightly further, added the language. Um, the board staff member will, oh, I have a typo there. I need to get rid of A, will record approved minutes and other significant committee documents or will oh will hold on to them for a period of four years. I don't know what all that close section stuff is that needs to come out. Um, but anyway, that was a minor change. I think those are all the changes I can think of. But Mr. Newsom, if you know of other changes that we this is because there's the problem is it's so there's so many track changes now. It's difficult to really find all your changes, but please, please uh follow up.
Excuse me before you start, um, Mr. Newsom. Uh, boy, remember Boozer Strutter. I saw your hand out. Did you wanna say something?
Well, I didn't want to go before Mr. Newsom covered more.
Okay, then that's fine. Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Newsom.
The um points I've got are really discussion points um rather than changes. I think Robin did an excellent job of capturing the things we discussed after the last meeting. Um, under closed session on this page two. It's uh under the definition section, Cindy. Cindy, you're really working overtime moving these things. Sorry about that.
It's F, Cindy.
Uh, yeah, I think it's C D E F. Yeah, closed session.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, okay.
Okay. There's a there's an issue we discussed earlier about the appropriate person to take minutes. Um, here it says that the um chair is going to designate uh personnel to take minutes. Um, the question is, do we want to change that to the board staff director or board staff as may be available? And the reason I say it is it um board, the the board staff are confidential employees. Um, so any one of them um would would be eligible to take minutes. So if the director is on vacation or ill that day. Uh, the another staff member could could take minutes. Um, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I did want to call that to your attention. The other thing about the closed session is um uh, we had a discussion earlier about the fact that um executive sessions used to be taped recorded in order to allow the minute taker to um check to make sure that they had the minutes correctly. Um, so my suggestion would be to add at the very end. Um, if there if no member objects, minute takers may record the executive session to aid in minute taking. So those are the those are the two things, just two discussion points I wanted to raise under closed session. The next one I was looking at was uh special meetings.
Hey, Joe Day, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I know we discussed this previously. If it was, it's my understanding that executive sessions were taped previously without giving the members the opportunity to object. Uh, if that was the previous uh policy, and it's my understanding that may be the policy that the board wants to go back to. And this may be the opportunity.
You know, obviously, I've I've no objection to that. I I just say that out of a sense of courtesy, but yeah, I mean, however, um the board wishes to proceed, I'm I'm not stuck on that point one way or the other.
Yeah, I guess we would need guidance from the board because that's not my decision, the Joe Day's decision. I just know that it there was previous discussion and.
Right. Is there is there a law that prohibits uh use and tape reporters or executive session reporter?
The the only um law that comes to mind for me is um the Maryland's Wiretap Act, which um makes it illegal to surreptitiously tape private conversations. Um, in in this case. I I mean, I'd want to look at the statute again, but my guess is that as long as all the board members know they're being taped, it wouldn't be a violation of the Wiretap Act.
Yeah, and and I'm thinking also, as long as we bring this to the attention of all board members. If we put it in this policy and we make sure they know it's in this policy.
Yeah, I mean, they're charged with the knowledge anyway, so.
Correct. So you know, that that's how I look at that, but we'll hear from the other board members. Okay, go ahead, Joe, Mr. Newsom.
Yeah, um, it's number three, special meetings. Um, I I guess we're here. Okay. Uh, the notes I had for this was that um we I I think what I'm gonna need to do if this gets passed is provide the board with um some some guidance about how this will take place. In other words, it requires a written request uh sent to the chair, five uh that five board members want to have a special meeting, um and that's got to be delivered seventy two hours in advance of the hour of the meeting. So how would that play out? I mean, would it be an email with the five board members uh names who all want the special meeting and you'd have to copy those board members on the email so that um they're on notice that it's being represented that they want to have a special meeting, um that sort of thing. Um, I did put in there that um if whoever's considering asking for a special meeting, if they want a a motion considered, um they ought to put the motion in writing so that members will have at least seventy two hours to think about uh the motion and which way they feel about it. Um, it was suggested to me that to remove the requirement that the most motion be posted on board docs within a reasonable time before the special meeting. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, but um those are the things uh that strike me that I I probably would need to supplement this with some uh guidance to the board about how about how to go about um calling the special meeting in sort of the logistics of it uh to make sure everyone understands how it would work. Um, down below emergency meetings, um.
Hey, Joe Day, can I just jump in real quick?
Of course.
Uh, if we're talking about special meetings, I don't know if we want to have the members submit a specific motion because if the motion needs to be modified. You could make the argument that, well, that's not what was advertised. And you know, there needs to be some wiggle room, you know, the 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 subject matter.
Mm hmm.
Be put on notice, but I don't know if you want to put the exact motion because if during discussions, like I said, needs to be uh changed. You you may have to have another special meeting to address the specific motion which was not advertised previously.
So it'd have to say the motion which is subject to amendment at the meeting is submitted in writing, something like that.
Okay. I just as long as there's some wiggle room and it's broad enough that we don't have a problem. Uh, you know, if if a board member on the side of the motion that was carried, we wouldn't want to, you know, have a situation where they uh have a Opens Meetings Act complainer or something along those lines, but uh we work out the the language.
Okay. Um, the the next note I had down here was um just to provide examples about what would constitute an emergency. To me, emergency is anything that if we don't act, something bad is going to happen and and bad would be uh the school system would be out of money. Um, we would be out of compliance with the law. Um, there'd be a safety issue related to weather or uh health issues. And I don't know that that needs to be defined in here, but I'm just sort of throwing it out as uh examples of why we we might need emergencies. If if anyone thinks that um those examples are examples such as those should be included in this, I'm I'm happy to add that language. But um uh that's basically what I'm talking about. For discussion items in closed session. There was the discussion earlier when we're closing a meeting having to do with um in order to obtain legal advice from counsel, uh, there's a fear that we're going to stray into an area that's not covered uh under the Open Meetings Act. In other words. If you want um legal advice in executive session, um that that's certainly within the home age. If you start talking about possible policy or possible motions to make. Um, then Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can stray into an area we don't want to stray into. Um, so that was expressed to me as a potential concern um about um these exceptions listed here, specifically the um uh legal advice exception. Yeah.
Joe Day, that that comes directly out of the law. That's the specific items.
I know it. I know it. We we and we had one, we had one earlier, I want to say nine months ago where um my understanding, this is not legal advice, but it's the same principle. They they went into closed session to discuss a personnel issue. Um, but but because of the manner of the discussion, there was an Open Meetings Act violation. Um, and it just it seemed kind of picky to me, but I could see where the same thing could happen with legal advice. You start talking about getting legal advice from counsel and then you start talking about the permutations or of potential actions. Um, if you're no longer getting the advice and you're just talking amongst yourselves. Um, if I I don't know, I I it really has to do with the Open Meetings Act more than anything else and and how um sometimes they're very, it seems to me they're very uh persnickety about um crossing lines. Um, that's just my editorial comment. Robin, you already talked about the annual meetings. Let's see. Okay, the question I had about, this is page seven, it's um under changing the date, time or place of a board meeting. Um, under number two, it talks about the amount of notice required to change the date, time and place uh listed on the board calendar. Uh, in reading this, I'm not sure who controls this. Is this something that would go to a vote by the board at the previous meeting or? So I I I um that's that's the one thing that the it's not clear to me what the procedure would be in order to change a meeting. The same thing goes for number three when we're going from um and in in-person board meeting to a virtual board meeting. What's the procedure for doing this? We know what the notice required is, but um I certainly didn't write in a procedure for it. And in reading this, that struck me as a weakness that probably needs to be addressed. Let's see, under agenda preparation. Um, it says agenda items supplied after the seven business day deadline may only be added to the agenda with the consent of the board chair. Um, this has to do with adding agenda items after the deadline is passed. And I wonder if we should add the word emergency agenda items so that way we're limiting the items that can be added after the deadline is passed to just um tho- those things which constitute an emergency. Um, that's that's a suggestion. Uh, let's see. Under the consent agenda, um, this is nothing really that has to do with um this policy, but I wanted to call this to your attention because um it suggests we made an error at the last meeting. Um, if if you go down to number two, um, it begins with if the C A CEO could not anticipate the placement of an item of mysterious nature on the consent agenda. If you go down, it says any item, um. Let's see, it says prior to the adoption of the consent consent agenda, any item on the consent agenda may be automatically removed from the consent agenda by board member for discussion. So that suggests to me that anytime a board member raises the issue and says they want a consent agenda item removed and placed on the non-consent agenda uh area, it's done automatically because they use the word automatically. And I think we made an error at the last meeting by having a vote on that. Um, so since we're all sitting here tonight, I just thought I'd call that to your attention. Um, if you scroll down to first reader, second reader and emergencies.
Hey, Joe, that says may be removed, not shall be removed. So.
Maybe automatically removed, though.
But it but it doesn't say shall be automatically removed.
Well, automatically suggests to me that it's done by operation of the meeting. Um, I mean, I I defer to you, Dennis, but when I read that, I that's what I see. I I automatically is not subject to a vote, but um, what I'll let.
Okay, um, so let me just offer this. The boy can change it to um what shall if we want to, right?
And that's the desire of the board, yes.
Okay, then so we're still discussing it. So, okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, then down to first reader, second reader and emergencies. Um, the 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 first reader, I I just want to let you all know, I want to change the language we're using for first reader. Um, what we're doing with first readers is we're receiving them. The board is receiving the first reader. Um, the purpose of receiving it is it's it's like a notice provision. Everybody at the board meeting is aware now that this, whatever it is, uh, policy or motion decision is now been accepted by the board. And so everybody's on notice that at the succeeding meeting, there's going to be an up or down vote on this thing. So we're not approving a first reader, we're receiving a first reader. It's it's a second reader where we're um going to be um approving uh whatever it is that that is uh up for decision. Again, this has nothing to do with the policy. I'm just pointing it out. We already covered May and shall, and we've already gotten rid of the December. So that's done. Let's see. All the way down, um Cindy, uh down to letter K, conduct of committee meetings. The what I'm trying to get at with the committee meetings is that they can proceed informally because it's a committee meeting. So um that means that we don't have to have a a pending motion in order to have a discussion. I mean, right now, there's no pending motion. We're having a discussion. So we can dispense with that. And then things like motions to adjourn, um, I I don't think we need the formality of um, I move, we adjourn. I think what we want is a chairman who sees that the um agenda is complete can say um, our agenda is complete unless there's some objection. Um, we'll we will adjourn and then hearing none, we're adjourned. Just make it a little less um formal so that the proceeding goes faster. That's that's what I have in mind, at least with regard to saying it shall, um, it's going to more informally. Um, and those are all the points I had from my prior discussions. I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you guys so much uh for uh the work that you and um uh Mr. Newsom and Ms. Walsh, you guys did a phenomenal job digging down into this policy. So now we're open the floor for discussion and I see boy member loser Strutter's hand up.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair McInnes Murray. A couple items now that I'm going to go with consent agenda since we just talked about it that frankly, this board does often pulls consent agenda for discussion. So I think we need a training. I think we really need to be clear with ourselves what it means to be on a consent agenda. And if discussion is still needed, it should have never been on consent agenda. So maybe that's for the chair, vice chair and the CEO and everyone involved in agenda setting. To be really clear about that. I mean, I think typically consent agendas have proclamations, you know, that we as board members typically do not pull to discuss. Some of them special and we want to acknowledge they're the first or something and and we've done that. But I do think this raises that we need to all be clear what a consent agenda item is. So I guess.
I agree.
I may be talking text in this document, but I may really be talking about training of this board because it consent agenda has been pulled for discussion for the four years I've served on this board. So um, but the other one is we need to change the number of board members to call special and emergency meetings because that was never changed to accommodate a fourteen member board. It was a holdover from a ten member board. From a ten-member board, it should be seven to call net as a fourteen-member board, it should be seven members for emergency or special meeting. And I think that that really will clarify the urgency of the matter. If fifty percent of the board is in agreement, there should be a special meeting. And I think that's been part of our issue around these special and emergency meetings is, is that is not kind of that critical mass of the board that agrees there should be a special meeting. And I do think, again, it's training around being more precise about the meeting, so said notice shall cite the purpose of the meeting and the business to be considered. I think in many cases we have done that, but I think it's either that we have to be clear we're discussing or we're making a decision about X. You know, like terms discuss, like that we're saying we're discussing or making decision implies we're voting on something. Just some of that I think would help. So to, you know, so I don't know that we have to get so in the weeds and prescriptive in this document. I think it's more of a training thing. And I think some of us have really, like, you know, have, have been through meetings where we really understand that that wasn't clear. I really think the board member calling the meeting has to say we're making decision or if we're just discussing. Like, that's the mi- that has to be a minimum. Because that has been the biggest conflict. Go into a special emergency meeting and you only, and you're shocked that you're being asked to make a decision that night about something you've never heard of. So that's where I think we have to get back to the fifty percent, the seven members. And we have to declare discussion or decision so that we're clear on if we're voting that night. Um, so those are, that's some of my feedback tonight.
Okay, so I'll ask you the same. Thank you. I will ask you the same question. I, this is a recommend, a recommendation that you would like to see reflected in the document when it comes back for us to further discuss it.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so Ms. Welsh, do you understand?
I, I, I'm actually going to uh, rely on Mr. Newsom to make any of these final changes that we're talking about, since he already has a long list of things he plans to be changing, so.
Mr. Newsom, do you understand what board member Boozer Struthers has said?
I do. This, this is what I understand. I'm going to change the number of board members required to call a special meeting. I'm going to change them from five to seven because that reflects actually a majority of the board. And then rather than say they have to produce a motion, I'm going to say the um, the, the request has to reflect whether they want to have a discussion and what the topic is, or whether they want the board to make a decision and what the topic is. Will that fill the bill?
Yeah, as well as emergency, both special and emergency have that, the same language around five and, and the same text around what it's about.
Special and emergency? Okay.
And I see Mr. Whitley nodding in uh, concurring. So this is good, moving in the right direction. Any other board member have any comments? And I, I need to acknowledge that Dr. Kenneth Harris has joined us. So Dr. Harris, do, would you like to say hi?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just saying, hey, I'm fly on the wall tonight, happy to be here.
Alright, thanks. Uh, any other comments from board members regarding uh, policy ninety-three sixty? Okay, hearing none. And once again, I need to thank um, Mr. Newsom and Ms. Welsh, because you guys spent a lot of time uh, digging into the details and I appreciate that. And I'm sure the board members will too. So Mrs. Welsh, please take on the advisement, the recommendations made today on Black uh, Board Bylaw ninety-three sixty by the Policy and Governance Committee and bring back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting scheduled for January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, the recommendations. And it will continue to be a discussion item. Are we in agreement, uh, board members? Vice Chair Alvaro Serrano, you in agreement that we continue to have this as a discussion item? Um, can't see you. Vice Chair Alvaro Serrano, where? I need the three of us to agree. Uh, Pam, board member Boozer Struthers, do you agree it should continue?
One more round of discussion seems reasonable, given the conversations we're having.
Okay, and I'll, I'll come back to um, Vice Chair Alvaro Serrano. Okay, so moving forward. Policy ba- um, five zero, hmm, five point zero, policies for review or action. All actions taken on the policies today pursuant to board policy ninety-three forty, policy development, Roman numeral four, paragraph seven D. There are two policies for review or action. Five point one, policy thirty-five hundred, naming of schools, school district facilities, dedicating areas of school and school district facilities or grounds and erecting monuments. Uh, colleagues, may I have a motion to forward revised policy thirty-five hundred naming of schools, school district facilities, dedicating areas of school and school district facilities of grounds and erecting monuments to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comments.
Um, I, I moved to uh, forward to the full, well, this is for, we've already done public comment, we're.
So we'll need to do it again because we changed some contents. We changed, it's not cosmetic.
We're going back through public comment, okay.
Right, because it's not cosmetic, it was substantive. So, um, and I second. Alright, um, it has been moved and seconded. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of policy thirty-five hundred.
Okay, so um, we had, we had made revisions to this policy and then it came back from public comment and then remember Boozer Strutter provided some additional recommendations for changes. Um, and so based on those recommendations, I did um, share everything with Dr. Golson. And we, and had some lengthy conversations about it. And the changes that we ended up incorporating into these, this policy had to do with instead of where previously it said only deceased individuals that we would not na- could not name, we would only name schools or school district facilities or sections of schools or school district facilities after deceased individuals, we changed it to uh, uh, living and deceased. So whether you're, whether you're still alive or you're deceased, the name, we would be able to use that name. Secondly, and so then if you, um, as, and I'll take you right to the policy in the section, uh, the section in the policy in a se- in one moment. But the other piece that had to do with uh, was the uh, naming commission. So, and the conversation, I think, board members Boozer Strutter uh, uh, recommended that we uh, have a naming commission, but it also that the naming commission go back and look at all the names of schools and see if they, and run them through the rubric that the ta- the county's task force had developed uh, to evaluate the names of schools. Um, and the administration feels strongly that at this point, that is, that is not our goal, that our goal here is actually about naming schools and naming sections of schools and stuff, but likes the whole idea of a naming commission. So what you would see would be is that you'd have your committee. The committee would uh, come up with their three recommended names and then they would, instead of sending them to the, to the CEO who would then prioritize those three recommended names, it would go to the naming commission. Then the naming commission would take those three names and run them through the rubric, which the um, task for the county task force had come up with. And it's, it's pretty explicit and it goes through positives and negatives and does a very good job of, of allowing anyone who's evaluating what the name, whether it's the name of someone who's living or someone who's deceased. Do they meet the criteria that we're looking for in terms of naming a school or a facility after a person? So, and then after they, the naming commission evaluated these names, if in fact they they want, let's say, one of the names didn't make it, or two of the names, the committee would have to go back and relook and identify three other names of it, so the process. But what, they could never, the names could never make it to the CEO until they basically had been endorsed by the naming commission that, which had evaluated each of the names. And then once the CEO received the three names, she would prioritize them in the order that she thought, which would be the best name, second, third, and then it would go to the board to vote on. So in that sense, if you uh, go through this um, policy, um, if you would uh, scroll down, Cindy, please. And these are just uh, definitions, keep going. I think is, uh, so the first part has to do with the committee. Wait, wait, there's this section about the, the uh, naming commission. It talks about also the criteria for being in the naming commission, that it would reflect um, uh, individuals who are, um, that reflect diversity and demographics of the student body. Um, and it's, and the CEO would appoint these people. Um, and would also determine how many participants she wants, the eligibility for membership term of service. Then if you proceed further, you go like for new schools, consolidate schools, it says school shall be named after living or deceased. So where living has been incorporated in there. And then if you proceed further, uh, scroll down, please. Uh, it talks about that. I stopped right there. Can you just go up just a tad where it starts that paragraph? Thank you. See? Then it says, it says the naming commission would evaluate the three proposed names, uh, and there's pictures on my thing, so it's cutting it off. Hold on a second, let me get to my.
Proposed names utilizing the evaluation methodology and scoring rubic developed by the French Georgia's County Council Responsible Legacy Task Force and provide the results of the evaluation back to the committee and school principal. Did you want to read the whole thing or just?
No, and then basically it says exactly what I just said. Then if they don't, if someone does, and when the names doesn't meet the criteria, then it would go back to the committees and they could provide uh, the opportunity to identify a replacement name. If that replacement name would be submitted to the naming commission to evaluate again. Uh, and then uh, ultimately, when they came up with three names that met the criteria along with the evaluation results, it would be submitted to the school principal who would then submit it to the CEO. And the CEO would then recommend three proposed names in order of the preference. And she absolutely did like the rubric that the uh, county's uh, task force had developed because it does a very good job of evaluating the names. Um, and so then, um, I think if you proceed through the policy, you'll see that uh, in other places where it only said deceased, it now says living and deceased. Could, I think, keep going, um, like, uh, I just saw it somewhere. Oh, living, right, yes. And then the same process would be that we, that we would do the very same process for any of the other names that were, that any of the other items that we're naming. So that we would ensure that moving forward, these people uh, do meet the criteria for, um, for, for the uh, from the rubric and that we could be assured that these are people we really want uh, school to be or facility to be named after. So I think those were the big changes, uh, board member Boozer Strutter, that you had, that you had um, recommended that Dr. Golson um, was felt very positive about.
Thank you, um, Ms. Welsh, uh, board member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. I uh, that definitely appreciate all this and I'm so glad we'll be able to utilize the hard work of the county's um, commission to, to utilize this rubric. The um, I did want to just note for our colleagues who've joined that keeping it as living and deceased is actually consistent with the original version that removing living was the, a change during this process. It was living and deceased pre- previously. So I did want to note that for our colleagues who have joined us for this. Um, and I had come back saying for some reasons, along with vice, vice chair had joined me and um, noting that um, for example, Justice Sotomayor is very much alive. We really want to be able to, you know, honor the, a living person on this building. So the, the other thing I was scrolling here for, and I think I'm just having trouble with the, all the editing. Are we still including the three categories of person, geographic location, or um, descriptive word as the, the categories for naming?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I had put in some feedback around how difficult that was to put up names about standing individuals up against where you live that might be, you know, very um, meaningful to name after a community, which is very, you know, has been very popular in this county. Um, and I suggested that you pick one category of the three and you get, you do your process. Only names, only geographic or only descriptive names. So I, I, it doesn't look like uh, the CEO accepted that recommendation.
No, she hadn't. Um, no, she had.
Okay.
It was not made. I'm just looking, double checking to make sure. And I, I don't see it either, so I, I know.
Well, I, I think it's a cautionary words for future committees to, when they reach that point because we all just lived it with the name versus a community name. And so maybe that's just more cautionary tale that we share with future committees, like that that's something you might consider and that is not mandatory. But that, that's it. Those are my main points. So thank you so much. I'm, I'm pleased and I'm re- ready to vote. This to move back to the board.
Uh, any other comments from any other board members? Okay, colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding revised policy thirty-five hundred naming of schools, school district facilities, dedicating areas of school and school district facilities or grounds and erecting monuments to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. The, the policy, we will move to the full board with the rec- reme- our recommendations to seek public comments. We're moving on to five point two and, and we're right at seven o'clock, so we don't have very much more to go. Policy forty-two hundred, employee and four dash two oh five appeals before the Board of Education. It's an action item and it's a revised policy. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward revised policy forty-two hundred employee and four to, uh, four dash two oh five appeals to uh, before the Board of Education to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comments.
To, to move.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Um, I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us the overview of policy forty-two hundred.
Okay, um, so forty-two hundred, um, there were major changes to this policy. Mainly because the previous policy was um, not that clear in direction in terms of when you're having appeal, when you're having a hearing. What do you do for the, when you're doing one versus the other? Um, and it was not very complete in terms of describing what the steps may be. So when you look at this policy, you'll see that there's now definitions for a lot of the terminology that's utilized throughout the policy. There's also a whole section about it designating a hearing examiner when the board decides they want to designate here exam- examiner. And that's based on section, article, um, education article, section six dash two oh three. And then there is the, uh, it's laid out, but split out so that section six two oh two. So if we're talking about section six two oh two, we're talking about where the superintendent, the CEO has made a recommendation to either suspend or terminate a certificated employee. And once that, that's, um, recommendation comes through and the employee is made aware of that, then the employee has the right to um, appeal that decision and they have a right to have a hearing. So that's the six two oh two appeals. And then your four two oh five appeals, those are appeals where um, the CEO or designated of the CEO has made a decision about some controversy. For example, I just give you a simple example. Let's say that you have a parent that has requested a transfer to another school and it, and um, it goes through the, the process and the super, and the CEO is that designated determines that um, for some reason, it doesn't meet the criteria or whatever and denies that request for transfer. Well, then the, the, that, the parent absolutely has a right to appeal that decision and that appeal would come to to the Board of Education. And it could be just purely a written appeal or it could possibly go through the hearing process. So what, so in essence, the policy is divided into two sections. One that specifically describes what's going to happen when you have a section six two oh two hearing. And then um, a, a here, an appeal or a hearing under section four two oh five. So it helps make it just a little bit clearer. And then it also talks about the review standard and the burden. And then it also talks about the review standard and the burden persuasion under section four two oh five appeals. And then it has for each section rules for evidentiary hearing, including determination of whether you're going to have public or private hearings. Admission of documentary evidence hearings before a hearing examiner oral arguments. Representation where the where the person who's making the appeal has the right to representation. Terms of records and transcripts, then decisions and orders and then any ex parte communication. So if you just go through it, I'm not going to read through the I'm not I'm just going to scroll through so you can see the sections that have been incorporated here. Here we have all our definitions. If you can scroll through, please Cindy to get past the definitions. And then you get into the standards and the first section of the standards actually talks about applicability. And that this is specifically what I just told you is specifically addressing either appeals and and. Appeals under six to hearings under six two oh two or appeals and hearings under four two oh five. So that lays it all out through there. And then if you continue. Little bit further, then we have a whole section. It talks about the designation of a hearing officer. And this again is based on the education articles, article, section six two oh three. And they because the process has you have to select impartial hearing examiners. Or I should say here examine an officer. And so there are the requirements in the law that say they have to be in good standings, standing with the Maryland Court of Appeals. And they have to have at least three years of experience as a practicing attorney in Maryland. And if you could scroll down just a little bit further. And then participate in orientation. Go back up a section. You're a little fast. And that's conducted by the I can't read that again. I should get rid of these little pictures on the side here that might make it a bit easier.
Which one do you want real?
The one that shall require be required to participate in orientation.
I got it. Okay, C shall be required to participate in an orientation conducted by the designated needs of the board. Prior to hearing as an hearing officer prior prior to serving as a hearing officer.
Thank you. And then it just it tells about how even in terms of you cannot have use a current PGCS employee as a hearing examiner. It's really the all the language in there is very clear to ensure that it's there's total objectivity and neutrality. In the selection of the hearing examiner. Then if you progress a little bit further, Cindy, if you'll scroll down. And it tells you how you would how you would actually assign the hearing hearing examiners. Because you might have several that you have listed that would be hearing examiners. And then what the hearing examiner must submit in terms of the record of the proceedings exhibits. So that the board has the information as well as the the available parties upon written requests. And then just I'm going to keep proceeding because so we don't have to read through the whole thing. Keep scrolling, please. And then they the so then the hair examiner will make a recommendation based on the evidence. And then from there, the board would review the records and the recommendation of the hearing examiner. And it would be the job of the board than to render the final decision. So in this instance of six two oh two, it would be that the board accepted the recommendation of the CEO. And the person is either suspended or terminated. And in a situation of a four two oh five, the the board either agreed with the decision of the CEO or the CEO's designated or disagreed. So that would be the part of the board that would be the board's job. So then it proceeds and you have start off with six two oh two. If you'll scroll down. Cindy, please scroll down. Thank you. And here you have all the information about all the steps that you go through and the timelines in terms of initiating a request for a hearing. And the timelines are very important. And then if you proceed further, keep going. And then I mean, it's just this is lots of information that probably you just need to read it in terms of just what what has to be. In the in the request and then what the process is. And then now I will tell you this certificated employees, they have a right. They can say, I don't want to, I'm I'm appealing, but I don't want to. I don't want a hearing before the board. I actually want a hearing before an arbitrator. So they absolutely have the right to choose an arbitrator. And so then there's language that talks about what their timeline is to identify to say, I don't want the, I don't want a hearing before the board. But I want to hear I want a hearing before an arbitrator. And then the at that point, if they say that, then the CEO would then. Move forward to get the person to take them to the arbitration process, which is through the and all this is in the Maryland Uniform Arbitration Act. So that lays it out. Then if you proceed, keep going further down. There's no standard of review for six two oh two hearings. It's it's really the independent judgment of the board and making the decision based on the. Preponderance of the evidence. And then you get to the actual hearings. So in hearings, you can, generally speaking, most of these hearings are private. But if let's say the employee wanted to have a public hearing, then ultimately they could request that in advance. And the if the CEO agreed and the presiding officer consented, they could have a public hearing. And then if you proceed, keep going further. And then it talks about the exchange of document documentary evidence that we and stipulating the evidence and having it having this happen. Five days prior to the date of the hearing and mainly just to move the process to expedite the hearing. Then they then it lays out the specifics for the hearing before the hearing examiner. So if you'll scroll, keep scrolling further down. And then the amount of time that the hearing examiner shall submit to the board. The record of the and CEO and the employee, the record of the hearing. Which would include the transcripts and all the exhibits. And then the hearings examiner's finding a fact conclusions of law and recommendation of which then if you scroll down a little bit further. Then. The board would make a decision. And then in addition to the hearing, they a person can request a an oral argument. Following the hearing and then and they have to deal within 10 days of receiving the information from the hearing examiner. And then the board will grant the request for the oral the oral argument only if there it falls in these three categories. That there was in the appeal involves some kind of constitutionally protected liberty or property interest. Or the if there's actual factual allegations of unlawful discrimination arbitrariness. Or the the board in its own discretion can determine that oral argument is appropriate. And sometimes they I know the state board often will entertain an oral argument and certainly local boards can do that too. And then it lays down the specifics if in fact an oral argument is going to be granted, all the detail in terms of what the board needs to do in notification. Please scroll down further. And then eventually the board has to finally make a decision after they received all this information. And now they also have the oral arguments. And then this gives you information about the right to representation. Pete keeps scrolling down, please. And then the records and transcripts and who is responsible for them and maintain them. And then if you continue further down. And then the duties and authority of the presiding officer. And generally speaking, if it's a here you have a hearing examiner, then the hearing examiner would be the presiding officer of the specific hearing. Okay, keep keep scrolling. And then the board does have an all matters for the board. The board has the right to have an attorney present at its council and may request the attorney to participate in any matters as counsel for the board. And then ultimately, the decision in order by the board lays out of what needs to be included and what needs to be considered for it. Then continue down further. Keep going. It also talks about, and this is an important piece. It says that ex parte communications. Well, any matter is under consideration by the board. No member should receive any communications from or communicate orally with any individual other than board members or legal counsel for the board concerning the matter properly before the board and outside the presence of all other and other parties. And no information concerning a pending matter may be released by the board, a board member or a member of the PGCS administration or any party to the proceeding. So that's an important piece in terms of the whole confidant confidentiality issue, which we actually have discussed even under code of conduct. So that's an important piece. And then you proceed, there's the the these procedures actually supersede any other procedures. Related to any contested matters appealed to the board. And then there is if sometimes there might be for good cause or reason to extend one of the timelines. So then there's language there for that. Keep proceeding. Keep going, Cindy. And now, okay, so that finished is six two oh two and now we're moving into four two oh five. And so that's four two oh five basically has almost everything very similar to six two oh two. The only difference is is that in an appeal for a four to a five appeal. Many times it might there might not be any hearing at all. It could very well be the fact that the the person says rights say that rights to CEO or request, I'll go back to the transfer situation. Request that transfer for this child to be in a certain school and explains why blah, blah, blah. And then the CEO responds back has a certain timeframe that she can respond back saying. That no, I like to say I disagree. This is, you know, this is it. I do not, you are not, you didn't meet the requirements of our procedures. So therefore you are not out to your child may not be transferred to this other school. And then the the parent would have 30 days to appeal to the board and they would write a complete. A complete, you know, argument. Oftentimes they get attorneys. I'm sure you've already experienced this and you'll see their whole written thing. And then then the CEO also has the right to then respond and write out what from their perspective, usually OGC. What the, you know, what the reasoning behind why the decision was denied, why the request was denied. So that just lays out the whole appeal process. And then it moves on and I'm not going to waste your time, but then it moves on to the whole hearing process that some items do end up going into a hearing. And I and that's what you'll see as you as you scroll through the rest of this and it's very, very similar to what you saw under six two oh two. I think that is basically in a nutshell, without me actually reading all the sections to you, but it's it's very similar. So it's 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 definitely better organized than what the other policy was. Separates out the two different types of appeals and makes it pretty clear about what has to occur and what are the timelines to accomplish the different things in each of the appeals.
Thank you. From from my own personal perspective, it definitely is going to help me with the appeal. So I thank you. And I encourage all board members to read this document after we approve it. But anyway, thank you so much, Ms. Welsh. Okay, board members. Any discussion? Okay, board member Boozer Struther.
Yeah, I just want to echo that that this is excellent that we've needed this and it's very clear. And I see lots of moments in time reflected in in here to make things clear. And I'm really glad we have this at this point in time. So we welcome new colleagues who will be doing appeals for the first time. So thank you.
And I do thank you. And I do want to say that not in addition to me making all the revisions, OGC, several of the attorneys out of the OGC's office reviewed this. And and incorporated comments and stuff that may changes also. So you have several collective brains looking at as well as it did go to Dennis too. So.
Yes, yes. So I I definitely appreciate the work. I appreciate the the team that seems to be dealing with all of these policies. And we we are, I think we've, I think we've come a long way with at least ensuring that the board members have the appropriate policies in place. We are getting there. We're not all done yet. But we are getting there. So I'm appreciative to all of you guys. So thank you so much. And please extend our thanks, the committee's thanks to the general counsel and her team.
Okay.
Okay, so colleagues. Are there any objections? Well, first, are there any more comments from anywhere? No, okay. Colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding revised? Policy eighty one. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Am I number eight? Forty two hundred. Revise policy forty two hundred. To the full board for the recommendation to seek public comment. Here are no objections. The motion passes. Thank you so much. Finally, we're getting there, guys. Update items. Policy for second reader are. Five point three, policy is a new policy for pedestrian safety plan. Five point four, policy zero one twenty systems oversight. Policy five. Five point five, policy four one one two appointment of personnel. And policy five point six, policy four one one four official, I mean, school official financial disclosure. I see Robin Bell's just saying, thank you.
So I would just requesting in the policy four one one two appointment of personnel. I'm requesting the ability to make some minor changes to that policy. I know it went through first reader is supposed to be going to second reader. But and these changes are not any substantive in nature at all. They really have to do with a slight reorganization. And could I share those with the committee? So Cindy, could you please pull up policy four one one two?
We got.
Okay, so if you keep going, Cindy, down through. Oops.
Nope, you had it. There you go.
You go. Keep going. Okay, but stop. Go back up a minute. Super previously, it said appointment of executive. Appointment. Appointment of exec hold on. And I don't know what happened to the cross outs. Appointment of certificated staff. And actually, so that is the the part in the law says the CEO shall hire and set the salaries of chief operating officers or chief financial officers or chief academic officers, the chiefs of staff, board liaison or other necessary executive staff. So the reality is is that although the CEO cannot appoint most certificated staff. She actually has the right to appoint exec that anyone that's basically on her executive team or executive cabinet. So instead of having what was there before appointment of certificated staff. We made that as one section appointment of executive team. And then under it, for the rest of all the ones that were there before appointment of certificate certificated staff. So if you proceed down, which was already there. That's all the language that was there before. And I mean, it was just so in essence, there's a new title in when it comes to the exception where she can appoint the those particular executive staff members. And then under appointment of non-certificated staff, instead of having where previously we had. The board grants the CEO authority to point all non-certificated administrative and supervising personnel at grade thirty or above and and those. And all other non-certificated personnel positions that are comparable to the positions listed in four A two. Well, the reality is is if she can appoint all non-certificated staff, we don't really need to designate parts of non-certificated staff or sections of the non-certificated staff because she can she can appoint all the non-certificated staff. So it's really just simplifying simplifying the policy. And then the very last change is a small word change. If you move forward to the very end of the policy, Cindy. Not to the very end, but right. Right there. So it says that and for some reason, I don't know why. Why my changes are not showing. I bet it's under here. I know it is under the picture. It says what got deleted next. So the question was asked of me, well, what what do you mean by the next public board meeting? And myself and another OGC attorney said, well, we thought it meant like, so you have your close section session. And then you have your public session and the public session is the next session. But I the question came up was not quite clear because it might make it sound like you have to wait to the following group of meetings to actually discuss to vote on something that was discussed in closed session. So to make provide better clarification, we took out the word next. To vote on something that was discussed in closed session. So to make, provide better clarification, we took out the word next. So all, all three changes are really just about simplifying and clarifying the language so that when you're using this policy. It's very clear and it, it's nothing is substantive, because we haven't changed anything in terms of what the requirements are. So we're requesting that would be possible to make these small changes as it moves forward to second reader to get finally adopted.
Okay, uh, board members, what's your pleasure? Do you have any objections to the policy moving forward? The second reader with those changes, the board member Boozer Strather?
Well, I guess I just want to make sure we do it right, that, I mean, that looks kind of substantive to me, especially the, that first one. Like that would feel more like an amendment at this stage in the process at first reader to second reader, that either we let it go to second reader. And Chair, you explain, we actually want to send it back to committee. Seems like, you know, like, I just want to make sure we do it right. So I'm, maybe I'm looking to you, Mr. Whitley.
Yeah, and I'm looking to Mr. Whitley too, because, well, I listened to Mr. Whitley first.
I'd actually unmute it. Um, I think we can defend it going to second reader with the changes that have been made. Um, you know, out of the, uh, if, if the board wanted to act out of an abundance of caution, we could send it back. But I think we can defend the actions that were made as that, I do believe that they are cosmetic. They, they don't significantly affect what has already been presented to the public. I don't think the change it, from, or changing, changing it to executive team uh, would um. Be something that the uh, public would not understand what was done and the other things were just cosmetic in nature.
Right, so then my ask is at the next board meeting, when it goes to second reader. Uh, if Ms. Welsh puts something together for me to communicate to the public. About the cosmetic changes. Then that keeps us, I think, Pam, I think in me, what you're asking, do it right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just making sure.
Transparent.
I just want to make sure we do it right and transparently and.
Yes.
I think we also try to, like, we try to limit these so that they don't become routine, you know? And I think, you know, I was just wanted to make sure that this truly was cosmetic, you know, like, so, thank you for your.
I, I appreciate that, so the, the consensus is that we let it move forward, but at the board meeting, I would speak to it. Um, and this Welsh, please put those things in the document for me.
I will, I will.
And I think in, in the four months or six months, we've been on uh, council for the board, this is the first time that's come across. I, I don't believe it's something that's uh, occurring frequently and then, and I will make sure, I keep an eye out to make sure that it's something that doesn't occur frequently as well.
I appreciate that, thank you so much. So on that note, um, on December, uh, on. January seventeenth, items five point three through five point six. Uh, we're, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm tired, okay, I'm sorry. On December eighth, twenty twenty-two, items five point three through five point six were voted on and approved by the full board as first reader. The policies outlined in these items, five point three through five point six, will be voted on. As second reader at the full board at the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three uh, board meeting. So I thank you guys for all of that and Cindy, I thank you so much for my annotated agenda, because I would be lost about that. Let's go to six point oh, follow-ups and next steps. Uh, six point one, follow-ups, follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Next steps, the next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please check the board page on PGCPS website for more information. Seven point oh, uh, clo- closing remarks from the chair. Seven point one, closing remarks, thank you, everybody, thank you so much. For a great meeting tonight with a meaningful discussion, I'm serious. I, I believe that the work that um, Ms. Welsh, Mr. Newsom. The General Counsel, uh, Mr. Whitley. The board will be better off for it. So I thank you all, because we really are trying to do things right and we really are trying to. Ensure that we're addressing the issues that the uh, public holds that's accountable for. Um, having said that, I invited some new board members to join us tonight and we had one uh, board member to join us, which I appreciated. And I'm hoping that he will consider to join this committee, but that's, you know, his choice. And um, before I request a motion to adjourn, are there any comments from any of, anybody else on the panel? In the committee tonight? If not, I personally want to wish everyone happy holiday. Now may I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
It has been moved, I corrected it to adjourn. Um. The, the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, poly, policy and governance meeting. Any objections? Hearing none. Thank you guys, go eat, I am hungry, I did not eat my sandwich, I should have.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, guys.
All right.
See you next time, thanks, bye-bye.